So you're getting into the password you currently have and then you're going to change.
I need, did you get the new version?
No.
Well, we were saying that was January seven in.
Stuff that wasn't in there this morning.
Okay.
Yeah, just after he said an end. And I gotta go through and ask him a bunch of questions. Thank you.
All right, it's six o'clock and I'm gonna call this work session to order. Today is May sixth, twenty twenty five, and I'll turn the meeting over to City Manager Tom Sarri.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, Council, tonight for meeting with us in this work session tonight. The main goal of our work session tonight is to go to the next step with our budget preparations. So we've had three meetings previous to this that have been on the preliminary budget. We went through the revenue one night, and then we had two nights to go through the expenditures. So tonight, what I would like to share with you is a possible avenue in which we could balance the budget to bring our revenues in line with our expenditures. Okay? When we went through the preliminary budget, we were about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars heavier in expenditures than in revenue. And so what I'd like to do tonight is to go through just some things that I have found. I'm not even saying these are recommendations, but this is one means that we can go through to balance our budget, to bring the revenues in line with the expenditures. A couple things to mention before we get started is you're gonna have two different documents attached to board docs. The one that I called the preliminary budget in there is tonight's document. The other one is a document that combines the three work sessions that we had into one document. And it's about two hundred pages long, and it'll have all the documentation of the previous three meetings. The one tonight I'd like to go over only contains the balancing items that we would have. And like I said, this is one method to balance the budget. Several of these things that you'll see in here are really counterproductive, I guess, if you will, but they are a means to balance the budget, and that's what the goal is, is to bring it into budget with what we have. And so I've asked my department heads to sit up close tonight so that they'll be able to speak and answer questions about the different things as we go through this. One other thing that I'd kinda like to say before we get started is this will bring our revenues in line with our expenditures. There are still several categories of expenditures that are not included in the budget. One of those is a streets program. Okay, we don't have any new streets proposed in here. If we were to add that, our street replacement schedule would propose about a million a year into there. And the other thing tonight is our capital purchases, we capped at one million dollars. Our depreciation expense on the financial statement is well over one point five million. And so our capital purchases, we capped a lot lower than what our financial depreciation is. What that means is that as time goes on, our assets are gonna age out faster than they are being replaced. So to avoid a crisis of worn-out equipment and nothing to fund, I would say now we need five hundred thousand to a million more in capital than what we have in here to get this to balance. So there's at least about two million dollars in here that I would say really needs to be in here but isn't with just those two items. Tonight, we're gonna focus on budget items. It isn't gonna focus as much on services, like overall services. So a lot of what it's gonna take to balance the budget is gonna be to explore the services that we offer through public safety, recreation, public works. If we're gonna bring the budget into line, we're gonna have to examine those more closely. Tonight, what I have in here will be more towards specific items that we could pull out that'll help us bring it down kind of as a temporary fix. So we'll have to have further discussions on services at some point. The reason we haven't really brought that up to date is this is a learning process, meeting after meeting with these budget things. And if we were to throw something like that in early on, it would be tough to understand the full thing of what we're doing. So with that, I always like to start off, as we have our other meetings on page three, with our vision, our mission, and our culture statement. I think it's always good to start meetings with that because we understand what really our goal is as we go. So the vision statement of the City of Rawlins is Rawlins is a unique and vibrant city where genuine, resilient residents enjoy living in an appealing, safe, and welcoming community filled with boundless opportunities. That's what we're trying to build, and I'm just gonna repeat that over and over because that's what we're trying to do. Our mission is the City of Rawlins is dedicated to building public trust by providing exceptional services in a professional, safe, transparent, and fiscally responsible manner. And our culture statement is our happiness and success depend on building and maintaining relationships of trust one with another. Trust cannot exist without compassion, competence, and integrity. So with that, if you will turn to page five. This top box up here is exactly where we left off with our revenues. I just wanted to show you again that our revenues have the general fund portion, the recreation services brought in. The total revenues that were in the documents that you received earlier are twelve million eight hundred nineteen thousand. On page six is the expenditures, as they were shown in the preliminary budget, thirteen million two hundred and fifty-eight. And then if you go back to page five in the bottom box, you will see the difference that we're dealing with is four hundred thirty-eight thousand four hundred and twelve. That's the amount that we're gonna have to either increase revenues or cut expenditures to reconcile that to zero. And if we get that to zero, we will have a balanced budget. Okay, if you'll turn to page seven. What I have put together here for you is you will see the variance at the top, four hundred thirty-eight, four twelve. That's the status of our preliminary budget. That's just where we stand, that's what we have to work with. You will see down below that, those are items that for discussion purposes, I went out to say we could do this, we could do this, these are kind of the obvious things throughout the budget. And as you can see, the grand total of that comes to the four hundred thirty-eight thousand four hundred and twelve. So if Council were to say, yes, do all those steps, we would be in balance. But as we go through these things, I'm sure Council will say, let's discuss that before we pull it out. Let's maybe look at some other alternatives. And that's what I'm hoping tonight, that we'll be able to share with you the different thoughts that I had there and what services would be out, and get Council's thoughts. And like I said, I have department heads here tonight so that we could have an open discussion about these items. And then, as we go through page seven, on pages eight, nine, and ten, I have explanations of these a little bit more in depth, okay, as to what my reasoning is, which I will share with you. But as you get home or you get to reading this, you will be able to go back and get a little bit more information out of pages eight through ten. So the first thing that I added in below the variance there is I believe from the preliminary budget that we can add a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to the revenue budget through interest income. Our preliminary interest budget was three hundred and forty thousand. We are currently receiving less than that, it's about two hundred and seventy thousand is where we're currently at. But we believe that if we can get two percent overall on our cash reserves within the general fund, that we can bring that revenue number up to a half million, which would be a hundred and sixty thousand dollar increase. So that's the first line item that I had there was to increase what we talked about, the interest income, a hundred and sixty thousand. That would bring the overall interest revenue within the general fund up to a half a million dollars, and that's based on about twenty-six million dollars in cash reserves. That's just under two percent. Overall, and interest rates are at four percent, so we think that that is reachable. The second item that we had is looking through our revenues. I was able to look at the gaming line item, which is horse racing. Horse racing started about two to three years ago, and we estimated the overall revenues at that time at about seventy-five thousand a year. They have increased from seventy-five thousand, they increased up to about a hundred and twenty the next year, and one seventy. At the end of April of this year, we are at about two hundred and twenty-two thousand. So it is a growing pattern, and the budget that I had shared with you earlier, which was based on revenues from the end of February, was at two hundred thousand. And so for the year that we're in, we are gonna surpass that original budget amount. And so I feel comfortable on my end increasing that twenty-five thousand dollars to two hundred and twenty-five, you know, based on the increases that. So you will see that at twenty-five thousand added in. The next line item is to increase transfers in to the general fund. When we did the original budget, the operating transfers in were coming from the enterprise funds for services that were paid for out of the general fund, and the operating transfer would be a reimbursement of those costs. We were very careful this year to make sure that all of those costs were originally charged to the enterprise funds this year instead of the general fund. So we have moved out the utilities clerk over to the enterprise funds and allocated the time where it was in the general fund. We've taken a lot of those things, so the operating transfers in would have, under that system, have gone to zero. Okay, because all of the services at the enterprise fund were incurring or charged in the enterprise funds. What we did not take into account in the original budget, that I did not put in, was a transfer from the internal service fund for the increase in the health insurance. Okay, so as our insurance increased nine percent premiums, we can pull that from the internal service fund over to the general fund to cover those costs. And the total amount of the increase that we had was a hundred and fifty-one thousand. So I took what the original transfer was, and I increased it by sixty-six thousand so that the operating transfer from the internal service fund to the general fund will be a hundred and fifty-one thousand, and that'll cover the nine percent. So we've added that in. The next item, we did not add into the budget the step increases on the new salary schedule that we had. We just had maintained that as if there were no step increases. But I felt that I would plead to Council is after we went to the new salary schedule, I feel it's best in the first year that we do the steps. I would hate to go to a new schedule and say, sorry, we don't have the funding, we're not gonna do it. I think it would come at a high cost, I think that we should dig as deep as we can in the first year to ensure that we allow for those step increases. General fund, that would be in addition to the budget of seventy-five thousand seven hundred and forty-one dollars. There was some overtime that was budgeted within the city manager's office, I have removed that overtime. I felt that was one that we can comp those hours out instead of pay overtime. So I removed two thousand six sixty-four in overtime. Now, I started looking at positions that were frozen in the past, and I am looking to refreeze those this next year. So a few months ago, Council voted to unfreeze the Human Resources Director position. We went out and we interviewed candidates, and the last two candidates that we had decided not to accept the position, which would leave us starting the process over again. So for the purposes that we have for this budget, I have froze that position again. So that would add a hundred and ten thousand between benefits and salaries back in. I have removed from this budget the proposed position of the purchasing agent through the finance department. I feel that with that not being a position on our organizational chart currently, that we would freeze that. The next item is software. So before I began my tenure at the city, the software cost for everything general fund, all software was recorded to the information technology budget. It was just one great big lump sum in there, and it was all charged in there. I feel very strongly that we need to know what the different departments cost the city. And if we have part of their cost recorded in some department, and some in another department, we're never gonna really know what the true cost of all the different departments are. So we went through and pulled that software out, and we recorded that to the department within the budget category that it fell within. In doing so, there was about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars of software that did not get moved from the IT department into the general government department. So when I went through, tracked all of those in, after I got the budget request from everybody, I started tracking them from years past, there's about a hundred and fifteen thousand that was not recorded in the original preliminary budget. So I've added that in. The next item here, we would, within two departments of the city, we did the same thing that we did with the software. So within our building maintenance department, which is a department, we would record all building maintenance throughout the city, whether it was enterprise funds, public safety, public works, it all went to the same account in there. And I feel that department heads need to take accountability for their buildings. They should know what's happening within their buildings. They shouldn't have to rely upon the building maintenance department to constantly update them on things in their building. I think they should know what is happening and their needs, and that can come through discussions with the building maintenance manager, obviously, they could have those discussions. But anyway, within this revised budget, I would like to break out the costs for all the different buildings to the actual departments that utilize those buildings. So the first one there is Public Works Building Maintenance. We estimated what our Public Works building up on Third Street, what those building costs should be, and we pulled it out of the building maintenance department, and we're gonna put it into the Public Works building. So when you see that we increased the budget twenty thousand, we're actually reallocating the budget. In our original budget, we had proposed thirty thousand dollars as a new department for the cemetery, which would have included two temporary staff to help us to beautify the cemetery, take out the stumps with the leaning headstones, all of those different things. We went up and looked, and we thought that two positions for summer help would have really helped that. For this purpose right now, we're gonna remove that out so that, like I said, we could find a way to balance. The next item is the Community Relations Assistance Position. A lot of the reason that we restructured the city the way that we did was to build a true community relations department that could function to help with the master plan that we have, the economic development plan, analyze data, do reports. It would have been a large help to the Community Development Director as an assistant to help push things further along. With, like I said, the overall budget situation in here, I have pulled that out for this purpose, which was about eighty-five thousand. In years past, we have frozen various positions in the city for this same purpose that we're doing tonight, to try to balance the budget, to bring it all back together. In years past, we have frozen three police officer positions that were vacant, the DDA assistant, a parts assistant, and we have frozen positions such as street maintenance workers and other positions. So for here, for tonight, I have included freezing two police officer positions. Last year, it was three. This year, I propose that we drop that down to freezing two, allowing the police department to hire for that third position. We have seven openings currently at the police department, and we feel that to fill those seven within a year would be very aggressive, and so we're gonna cut that back, see if we could bring on five, find some more of the budget for next year to unfreeze those. To increase police maintenance, forty thousand, that is twenty thousand for equipment, twenty thousand for the police building that we've reallocated out of the. We have seven openings currently at the Police Department and we feel that to fill those seven within a year would be very aggressive. And so we're going to cut that back, see if we could bring on five, find some more of the budget for next year to unfreeze those. To increase police maintenance, forty thousand. That is twenty thousand for equipment, twenty thousand for the police building that we've reallocated out of the Building Maintenance Department. We've increased for this purpose the capital within the police by ninety-nine thousand. What our intent with increasing the capital was, was to cap it at one million dollars that we have for capital. So you'll see that we recommend to put ninety-nine thousand into the police. And two lines down, you'll see a hundred and twenty-four thousand for fire. Both of those items included with the existing capital will bring capital to exactly one million dollars. And that's an area that we could always cut back on these other positions. But I just would like to note that I think we are headed towards a crisis where we're not replacing capital as it ages.
So when you have add capital ninety-nine to bring capital purchase to one million and then you go to Fire Department, you add capital one twenty-four to bring, is it a combined one million?
Correct.
Okay.
So both of those are added into the list that I have in here that'll bring it to one million. All right. I got close to balancing the budget and I had nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars left, so I took it out of Police Supplies. Okay, that was just balancing. The one here, I said remove, I meant to freeze the DDA Assistance Position that has been frozen. That's seventy thousand. There's a frozen Parks Technician Position that's currently frozen. With this, we would refreeze that, bring that back into the mix. And the last one was, is we just had an error in the salary budget that we caught within the Golf Department that we have corrected here that just increases the budget thirty-nine hundred. So if you go through all of those different items right there, that would balance the budget so that revenues equal expenditures. So the question that I have for counsel in here is, are these items things that counsel can back? Or would you like further discussion on these items? This is totally the pleasure of the counsel. This is only one way that I could get the budget to balance. This is just a potential. Counsel can instruct me any way the counsel would like. I do have department heads here with me that can answer any questions about any of those. Sorry.
So there's currently seven positions for the Streets Department. I would have liked to have seen that increase because there's so much work that needs to be done. Is there any way of increasing it from seven? To maybe adding four more people or would be conservative with that?
I would say yes with that. I mean, obviously, that's the pleasure of counsel. I can just say that if we increase expenditures, I gotta go find somewhere to cut.
Correct.
And that's just the only thing. And I struggled immensely
Sure.
to come up with these cuts. And there's like four or five of these positions in here that hurt.
Right, right.
But yes, I'm going to answer that yes. My only request would be as if I knew where else to look to cut.
Correct. Currently, Cody, do you feel that seven positions will be able to suffice for another year till maybe next budget?
With the positions that we have now in our operating budget that we work on, I feel that unless we increase our operating budget as well to get more employees, that would, we'd need to have a bigger operating budget as far as material costs, equipment. There's other things if we were going to add two staffing that we'd have to look at to make that worthwhile. So I think that it's a great idea and look into the future, we should really be looking at that. I think there should be a set plan in moving forward with that instead of just initially hiring people. I worry about certain seasonal times when there's not enough equipment for people to run and then we have people just sitting idle with no jobs to be done.
Sure.
So I believe that building a plan and moving forward in the future, that would look really great. And I would really like to have a larger street program to look to doing some of our own projects in the future.
Correct.
Be overlay work and stuff like that. But I believe that building a plan would be the appropriate direction on moving forward.
Building a plan for maybe next fiscal year?
We could look into that. Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I get working on that.
Councilmember Seelaw?
This is something we can go ahead and still take applications for and everything else. Same as if we did get three police officers wanted to apply and then all you got to do is come back to us and get a rest name on it. So we can't still hire if anyone wants the job. We can still apply.
Absolutely. If we could hire seven police officers, we would definitely be back in front of counsel.
Well, and the same with City Maintenance, Road Department, Street Department, all of them. If they got someone that wants the job, who applied for the job, we'd know we's.
Correct. Our only intent with these frozen positions is it's just putting the main problem of finding a budget to balance it off, you know, another year or into the future.
Councilmember. Can you give me a little more understanding about the Human Resources Director and why you took that off? With, first, how long have we been looking for a Finance Director?
We've been looking for two and a half years for a Finance Director. Our issue is with the Finance Director, just finding qualified applicants. The HR, when we put it out, we had several applicants and we selected five to interview. And one of them backed out before the interview. Two of them just didn't get on the interview. They just didn't show up. And the other two, we talked to and we brought one of them to Rollins. It was, we just could not get close on the salary is what it was. We just couldn't get close enough to have that individual come. There was genuine interest there, but we were off, I would guess between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars from what we could offer that individual. And I myself am not comfortable with one position being twenty-five thousand ahead of my other department heads.
Right.
That's just, that's just me speaking myself. But I would want to take care of my own before I go that far off of the salary schedule for another one. So we ended up back at square one.
Right.
We could contact others. I just know when I sat through here and I went through everything I could, I just don't know where else I would go to get a hundred and ten thousand.
How much is a Finance Director?
Continue that. The Finance Director is in the budget at ninety-five thousand for the salary plus the benefits. And we do have an interview Thursday, two days from now for a Finance Director. We do have a candidate that we felt was worthy of an interview. So we're crossing our fingers on that. But that's just my thought process behind the Human Resources Director. I have an individual that's a technician, but they just do the paper. Onboarding, offboarding, all the personnel action forms. They don't do the main five topics that an HR Director does. You know, the, all the things that, you know, an HR person would do.
Yeah.
So it was very, very difficult to even just put it on here. It just, like I said, it seems counterproductive.
Absolutely. If we kept a Human Resources Director and we, and I can't think off the top of my head, but there was a piece of equipment that was needed that was about three hundred and seventy-eight thousand? If we waited another year for that?
The only difference with that, okay, is we separate capital as a one-time expenditure. So if we were to reach out to somebody and say, let's go to nine hundred thousand in capital this year, not purchase something with an HR Director, next year, the HR Director's salary cost will still be in the budget and we've just lowered the amount of capital we could buy by a hundred. Unless we find the money somewhere
In that year.
to say, hey, we're going to increase revenues somehow or we're going to, we're going to look to cut services, basically is what we can look at. And if we did, then we could find resources. Obviously, this list here, if we cut services, we could afford all this. You know, if we were to reduce the services that we provide. But right now, for this budget, we just left the service level where it's at and we tried to budget for those services. If we get in and if we say we want to reduce services in all these different areas that we have, we can reduce it. That would free up the funds and then we could look to do these items basically listed here.
What services could be cut in the golf course that would cover a HR Director?
The golf course, right now, from my viewpoint, we've got the expenditures down to where they're rock bottom on the expenditures. We only employ two and a half full-time people on the maintenance side. We do have temporary within the summertime. They hire some temps, but we're down to like two and a half. If we were to look to cut those services, you're looking at some pretty major cuts within the golf course. And I don't know what those would even look like at this time. My thing on the golf course that I have shared with counsel is I believe we can market the golf course much better. And I think we can increase the revenues on that, which would act as the same as cutting. If we could add to the revenues, if we were to come up with a marketing plan, look at target audiences, do our true due diligence in getting people to the golf course. And with the city restructuring that we did with the departments, we removed the Parks Crew from the Recreation Director for the purpose to give the Recreation Director more time to write those marketing plans to see what we can do to increase those revenues. Now, how far we can realistically increase those revenues, that's yet to be seen or yet to be known. But we can do much, much better than we do. When we've looked at the golf course financial statements, their revenue margin runs at about thirty percent. So their revenues cover about thirty percent of their expenditures. We need to get that up to the sixty percent range. And I feel they have to do that to remain viable. Because without that, it is just a cost department at that point. There's not real revenues coming back to support it. And I think we could put the Recreation Center in the same category. We need to do better. Revenues have dropped. The revenue margin for the Rec Center is less than twenty percent. Their revenues go to cover their costs. And we've improved that over the last two years significantly with less staffing at the Rec Center. But we feel that a really good marketing plan in place and everything needs to be justified financially. And right now, I think it is justified based upon community interest and some of those things, which is really good because you bring the community in. But if you fail to look at the financial impact side, your costs just overwhelm you. And that's where I feel like on both of those in the shooting range, that's where we're at right now, is the revenue margin, it drops every year because our costs go up and we're not increasing or marketing our services. So we need to look at it a little bit more as if it were a revenue generating activity. Not all the way because it is community recreation. You really need to support the community and recreation. But it is right now a real strain on our resources. So that's where I stand on those three. I hope that answers your question. I think we're so low in all three of those areas that a reduction in staffing will probably stop the activity. You know, stop the golf course if we have to reduce staff. And our staff are great. We have two and a half staff and we have the second best golf course in the state. I mean, our staff are beyond wonderful. They're very, very good. So it isn't like we're spending a lot of money over there for what we're getting. We're not spending a lot there. They're really overperforming. But our revenue side is very underwhelming.
I get that. But if we did, like you said, not buy a piece of equipment, have that money go for, and continue to look for a Human Resources Director. I mean, if it took you two and a half years to find a Finance Director,
Yeah.
there's no guarantee that we would have a Human Resource Director.
There isn't, but Human Resources Directors are more available than Finance Directors right now.
Okay.
There are several cities that are struggling to get Finance Directors. One city I talked to that had an opening, had two applicants and they did not have a high school diploma, either of their applicants, for Finance Director.
Okay.
And that's all they got for applicants. So I mean, it's, but I think HR is a little bit different. I think there are more HR candidates. If we put it back out, I think our odds of bringing one in would increase. The ones that they interviewed were very high level. They were like really experienced. They would have been really good candidates. But when you get that high of level, the salary level increases tremendously because they're in demand. And then when you have our salaries here in Rollins, that's a big jump for them or a big drop to come back. And that's just what we found with those two candidates is.
Is that also kind of true with the Finance Director though? If you get a highly qualified Finance Director, are they going to want a lot more?
We will not get a highly qualified Finance Director for ninety-five.
Okay.
That's a CPA level, high level. I came, but I love Rollins. I want to work for you guys.
Right.
You know, but I think we would be lucky at ninety-five to have somebody with a college degree in accounting and probably five years' experience. I think we can hold out for that. I read a statistic the other day that CPAs are leaving the field four to one as to those going into the field. Four are leaving and one's coming into the field. And so the CPA market is like highly competitive right now. And that's going to lead down into non-CPA Finance Director candidates. It's just, it's where it's at right now. Rules have changed on how to sit for the CPA exam. You have to have five years of college now, a hundred and fifty credit hours. Where when I sat for it years ago, it was only a hundred and twenty. And then you had to have so many. And then you had to have so many accounting courses. Now you have to have a hundred and fifty, which is the equivalent of a master's degree. And so it is really competitive, those that are in. My own son is a sophomore at the University of Wyoming in accounting. He's already gone through interviews when he graduated. It's like he's already like taken, and he still has two and a half years, or two years
Yeah.
of school left, and he's like, Dad, I can go here, here, and here. And that's so different than when I graduated thirty-some odd years ago.
Well, if we still, back to the same thing, if we still come along with an HR director, then we can hire, we can always change their budget so we can, you know, bring in, and we can pay
We can. My only thing, and it's my stance, it's my personal stance, but I've got really good department heads. I love my department heads. And my highest-paid department head right now is at ninety-five thousand. And if you go to other cities our size, your lowest-paid department head's going to be one-ten. And that ninety-five is my highest. And I I'm going to be as loyal as I can to my department heads. And that's not because they're sitting behind me, and I'm saying that. I really, truly believe that. I want to take care of them before I bring somebody else in at a hundred and ten, a hundred and fifteen thousand.
So we, but we still need to, like you said, like Councilman said, need to continue to advertise for HR director.
We can do that. But if
To find that person who's willing to take the job here in Rollins for that price.
Yes. If we were to attract one, okay, to bring it in, I'm going to have to go somewhere else in the budget and find a hundred thousand, you know, to cover that. And I feel it needs to be an operating, which is year to year. Capital, you can do it one year, and then the next year, it's like, okay, now we've just like cut the capital out to support it.
But let's say we find one, right? You yourself said that you're looking at marketing to reduce the cost to us for the rec center and the golf course. If that works,
Yes.
that, there's your operating cost.
Perfect, that's right.
If not, then we can, next year's budget, get it again.
Revisit. We can, we can revisit.
But at least we're continuing to look for the people that we need.
I absolutely agree, yes. All right. On page eleven of your packet is the capital that we are requesting. And you can see that that comes down to exactly one million dollars. I would like to see capital each year of about two million, even if we don't purchase the capital to put it away for future purchases when we get things to the end of life. But anyway, there is the one million. A couple of things to note here, as well is impact assistance funds are mostly geared towards public safety on the impact assistance. And so police asked for a mobile data terminal. That's going to run about three hundred thousand dollars. I put a hundred of it under general. And as you can see down at the bottom of that page, I have two hundred under impact assistance. And then police would also like body-worn cameras. The ones that we have are aged out. I've also put that under impact assistance, as well as the fire department's battery-operated I'm going to mess that word up, extracation tools to help people get out. How's that for an explanation?
You hit it right on.
If they're trapped, this will help them.
There you go. Get out.
And then also under impact assistance would be the replacement of the fire engine, too. And what I would recommend within the first year is to move four hundred thousand over into an account so we could take four hundred next year and the next year. And that would give us the amount of the engine. On page twelve, what I wanted to show is we moved around some of the equipment maintenance and the building maintenance. I just wanted you to see that under equipment maintenance for two thousand twenty-five totaled three hundred and three thousand through the different departments. We've just reallocated that, and that budget is still about the same. So we didn't really increase or decrease that. We just reallocated it for equipment. And then down below is the building maintenance. We actually cut about forty-two thousand out of that through the preliminary budget in there. But I just wanted to show that on the other page, we just reallocated those amounts so that we didn't really increase that. And then page thirteen is what we just discussed within the impact assistance. We currently have just over three million dollars in there. A million for Edinburgh, and a million dollars for the match for the WWDC grant at Chalk Cherry. We have the items below then we want to add in. And then down below, we added in the ones that we just added. We would have to raise two hundred and twenty-four thousand in impact assistance funds next year, and I believe that that is probably on the low end of what we'll receive. I think we will receive more than that, but that would bring the cash balance to zero. Is there any more discussion on general fund or impact assistance?
So for the general fund, for the golf course, could we reduce that or get rid of that service truck and that plow? Maybe get a or do we have to purchase new? I know new would be, you know, the best thing, but maybe we could purchase a used vehicle with the plow on it that would last a year, just so we could save that money?
Would you suggest putting that in a different capital line item, or reducing the overall capital expenditures from a million lower?
So, I don't know. The golf course, though, to spend fifty thousand on a service truck, another ten thousand for the plow, sixty thousand dollars for the golf course that mainly runs a few months out of the year, maybe we could get a new truck for the city workers and then give a truck from the city with the plow to the golf course.
Okay, I got you. I'll I will follow through on that and see what
Okay.
you could do. Because I know the hand-me-downs to the hand-me-downs to the hand-me-downs end up at the golf course.
Yeah.
And I believe they still have a nineteen eighty-six model pickup that they're still running.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, when they ask for budget, that's what they ask. But we can definitely see if it's used or if we can reshuffle from within the fleet
Yeah.
over to there. So it would be a hand-me-down, but maybe in better shape than what they have.
Okay.
I will follow through on that. That's good. Okay. The last four funds are the enterprise funds that I want to share with you. And in the preliminary budget, we kind of threw the numbers in and we went over them, and none of the funds balanced, okay, with the revenues and expenditures, because they were the asks that they had and the revenue. And we had to go back in there and kind of massage the numbers a little bit to make sure that we are able to balance those funds. The water fund is on page fourteen of your packets. Where we left the water fund in the preliminary budget was at a deficit of two hundred and ninety-two thousand. That was more in expenditures than we had in cash. Under the capital asks in the water fund, there were four different water projects that were at a half a million each for in-town infrastructure, okay, that they had. And then we had two hundred and eighteen in equipment that we were budgeting through the funded depreciation method. So for the last four or five years, we've been saving for the purchase of a backhoe or the different things that they had. So when we went through this really well, we felt the best place to remove that was, was out of one of those four projects of the infrastructure. The odds of getting those four projects in next year were remote. So we feel that for going forward, we would just reduce the infrastructure budget, which would bring that basically within the balance. I do want to point out that we are looking at the master water plan. We're looking at fifty-two million in projects. And in order to accomplish fifty-two million, at some point, we're going to have to borrow some funds. I can tell you right now, there is no room for that payment in there yet. We could do a number of things, but I just wanted to point that out, that this is just our operating costs with in-town infrastructure. If we were to have to borrow money through drinking water USDA, we'd have to find a way to make whatever the monthly or the annual payment would be. And I'm not saying that it has to be through increased rates, but that's probably where we're headed. Just to kind of throw it out, that that's probably what we would have to do there. But so anyway, with the water fund, with that removed, that will balance the revenues and the expenditures. The sewer fund, we were about fifty-five, fifty-six thousand short of balancing. We were able to remove twenty-eight thousand of transfers to the general fund because we added those expenditures previously into the sewer fund. So that we did not have to transfer that where the situation would be that the general fund was paying the invoice and it was reimbursed. We've got the full budget now in the sewer fund. So we were able to take that out. We would recommend that we increase investment income fourteen thousand. We noticed during the preliminary budget, we had one thousand in there for interest income. We have thirteen, fourteen already this year. We just didn't get the budget updated. So we would increase that to fifteen thousand by increasing that line item by fourteen. And then the last one in there, instead of hitting capital, we would recommend reducing equipment maintenance thirteen thousand. That's where we would take the remaining balance out of, is the equipment maintenance account, which in past years has not been hit as hard as what the budget was. So it isn't like we're really cutting back a lot. It's just we're lowering that expectation. The landfill on page sixteen, the landfill, we were four hundred and one thousand off from balancing. The interest income was in the same situation. We had a thousand in the budget. So we recommend that we increase that budget eleven hundred and four. And that would leave us with four hundred thousand more in expenses. And what that four hundred thousand is, is the budget for a new loader at the landfill. The four hundred would be a cash purchase of that. We could decide to lease that, and that would lower that one-time expense and then take it over four or five years, what those differences are. We have a compactor and a scraper that we already leased. So my preference, which is mine alone, it's not council's, but a cash purchase of that, we could pull that right out of cash reserves and make that purchase and not have to go through the leasing process with it.
With the leasing project process, so they totally maintain it, don't they?
They do, and you have the opportunity in four or five years to end the lease and get a new piece of equipment.
It would be nice to see what the lease would cost us compared to buying one outright.
We can definitely look at that when we get there. We would like to start placing that order on that. The loader at the landfill, which we are required to have through the DEQ, it burns more oil than it does fuel right now. It's in really, really bad shape. So I think we've got three gallons a day of oil when it's used. It's just four gallons an hour.
Yeah, it'd be nice to just compare to see what
And we're happy to bring that
Maintenance ain't cheap on the equipment.
Yeah, and we're happy to bring that to council when we get it approved to purchase, so.
We have to do a long-term lease on that? If we did decide to lease?
Five years, ain't it?
Usually on those leases, it's like a set term of like five to seven years. But you have the opportunity at a certain point to get out of that lease. Or you could go the extra lease term and actually do an outright purchase of it. And when you get to the point of the lease where you can get out, they would come get the equipment, and then you can enter into a new lease and get a new piece of equipment. And so it could go seven years, but that would be like the outright purchase option of that. And so what organizations like to do is go through the four years of the lease and then get out and then get a new a new piece of equipment. And then whatever the difference within the value is, would be added to the new lease. And then you'd go forward for four years.
On some leases, at the end of the lease, maybe you have a buyout?
And that's what that would be. It's like a one-dollar bargain purchase option.
Correct, yeah.
And that's if you go like the full seven years, whatever it is. Sometimes it's eight. So if it's in really good shape and we want to own it, we could just continue the lease and then buy it out for a dollar at the end. If not, you can trade it in and get a new one. We do our golf carts that same way that we have, so we usually keep those four or five years, and then we trade them off and get into a new lease.
We're doing the scraper and the compactor that way right now.
Correct.
So
That's what we do with both of those.
Yeah.
And we're already two years into one, and I think a year into the other, or maybe three and two, but they're both fairly new.
Can I go back to page nine?
Sure.
So with removing the purchase agent, will the city still be able to try to align with the GPO?
The hard part with that is, is that a purchasing agent would streamline that process.
Right.
If not, someone within the finance office would have to spearhead that.
Okay.
And right now, there's really not enough time where we would try to do that. We really want to get into the purchasing groups. Like we've talked before, there's several through the state. Sorswell, for instance, is through the state of Wyoming, and there's huge discounts there. And they actually bid things for you. So if you have to put it to bid, they actually do that process for you.
Right.
And say, here's this, this, and this if it does. We just don't really have that to where we could put that to a position right now. That's That's why we were asking for that was to be able to get the resources for that as well as the ordering process.
Correct.
Right now, anybody throughout the city that has to order, they just have to get a purchase order, get it through finance, and they got to make the call to order it.
Right.
And if we had somebody that could take the purchase rack, know where to buy it through the purchasing group, that is what we would really like to work towards.
When we're purchasing locally, like with RP lumber or Baumgarts, are we receiving a discount as a city or are we paying retail?
I assume we're paying retail, but I'm pretty sure it's retail.
Okay.
But what would help us is, is as the city organization, we are really concerned with our local businesses. That's where we want to spend our money. But on the flip side of that, we really need to take advantage of the internet. And so we really need to weigh that out. And I think when you weigh that out, you really have to kind of look at local businesses. That's who we are as a city and we really, really appreciate our businesses. And we really want to support them. But right now, our purchasing can be described as haphazard at best. And I don't know if it's local, if it isn't local. I want to make sure our local businesses get a good share of our business.
Sure.
And right now, it's up to the department head or the person placing the order.
Right.
That's where it is, so...
Any other questions?
The last one in there is the recycling fund. It's the last enterprise fund, and that one was really close to balancing. We were ninety-five hundred off. So we would add thirty-five hundred into interest income, which is holistic. We would take twenty-five hundred out of the equipment maintenance line item and reduce the overtime budget that we had in there to where they would have to comp those extra hours off. And then we could bring the recycling fund in to balance then. And then the last one for the night in here is our internal service fund, which is the health insurance. And you will see that the net income loss down there is one hundred seventy-four thousand. One hundred fifty-one thousand of that is general fund and the rest of that are enterprise funds that had the increase in health. So we would reduce the cash reserves in there by a hundred and seventy-four thousand would be the actual reduction in those reserves. And we'd have to look, but it seems like there's four million dollars in there, around four million. And we wanted to use that as a rate stabilization fund. And that's kind of what we would do is move that over. The problem is, is we will get an increase next year and at some point, we'll have to restructure the health insurance a little bit. If not, over time, we will use all those cash reserves. But for the year being, I think this is a good way forward on the health insurance, so...
That's invested good, ain't it? That four million dollars is a good investment.
I believe a majority of that is in Wildstar, which is at about four percent right now. Some of it is at the local banks.
That makes a lot of difference.
But that's huge where it's not being used to do that. So the next step would be to take the information tonight. And what I will do is I will, I will change my work papers and change all the budget book to have that in there. And then at the next meeting, May twentieth meeting, I will present to you the first reading of the budget and it will be balanced with these items either included or removed from there so that you will have a balanced budget on May twentieth for the first reading. And that should be a quick discussion because we've been over all these different aspects. And so I will start building the actual budget book that we'll have. I usually get that done for the, the third reading is the one that we put out on the internet and kind of has all the good pictures and things in it. But the first two readings will be probably shorter than what this pamphlet is just to show that we're in budget and this is where we're at. And I will work on that budget book. It takes three to four weeks usually to put together a good budget book. It's about what we have until the first, for the third reading of it, so... So with that, I would entertain any questions? Concerns, like I said, I have department heads here that are willing to beg for funds, whatever you'd want. If not, if that's acceptable to council, that's the way I would plan on moving forward, so...
Any other questions from council? All right, so here we know all the questions and we'll close this work session and go recess until seven-thirty for the regular council meeting.
All right, so here we go. I need a motion for the agenda. Councilman Lumen?
I move to approve the May 6, 2025 city council agenda as presented.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, purple open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed. The motion passes with five ayes.
Okay, moving on. I need an approval for the consent agenda. Councilman Lumen?
Move to approve the consent agenda of May 6, 2025 as presented.
Second. I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, purple open online voting.
All right, moving on to citizens' participation. This is a public comment period, put in place by Resolution Number 2C 1996.
It sets a time limit for public comment of five minutes, with provision that the five-minute time limit may be increased at the request of a member of the public or a council member. Is there anybody that wants to speak on anything that's not currently on the agenda? Did you all hear that? Seeing no one is going to step up here, okay, we'll be moving on now to board appointments and presentations. Tonight, Memorial Hospital of Carbon County's new chief executive officer, Carrie Ashment, is here with us. I've met Carrie already, but if you would come up, we would appreciate that. Stephanie, you want to come up with him? No? I see how it is.
You asked.
It's my own fault. Mr. Carrie, introduce yourself. Let us know who you are. I already know who you are.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp and council members and publicly. I'm Carrie Ashment. I am the new and permanent CEO of the hospital, more than a hospital of Carbon County. I put that "permanent" in there because for the first three or four weeks, I heard, "Are you the permanent CEO?" And I, you know, knowing a little bit of the history, I was like, "Yes, I'm the permanent CEO. I'm going to be here for a good long while, so get used to me." Hopefully, I'll do a good job and take care of both the community and the hospital. But my wife and I, my wife's name is Terry, so Terry and Carrie, and we have three boys. And people keep asking me what brought me to Wyoming. I share with them that I have my grandfather on my father's side is from Star Valley. And so I used to haul pipe and butt hay bales there, you know, in the summers. And so I knew Wyoming, of course. My wife and I grew up in northern Utah in a place called Cache Valley, Logan. So, snow is okay, the weather is okay. We also raised our boys up in Billings, Montana, so even a little bit colder than here. Although the breeze here is a little bit more breezy than up there. So, anyway, if you guys can figure out how to fix that, I'd be really happy about that. But anyway, I'm glad to be here. The community has welcomed me with open arms. And so it's been really, really nice, really easy, an easy fit. And our, my expectation is as we work through many of the things that have been shared with me, as I've talked with the public, and come to understand what we've got to work on, that we are able to move things in advance, the hospital, in a positive direction. Hopefully, every week or every month, and that we can see good gains within, you know, the next few months and over the next year. That is my expectation. I wouldn't have taken this job if I didn't think we could make it happen. When I was interviewed for the position, they did share with me, and they were transparent. And they said, "I've got my work cut out for me." And we do, but it's a good work. It's a good challenge, and I've got a good team. Many of them are here tonight. So, it's going to be a positive thing. So, I appreciate this opportunity just to introduce myself and to put my face and name out there so that people know and can come. And hopefully, we can bring the community back. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming. I appreciate it. And the staff of the hospital, they're all here. I know you. All right, moving on to the Community Builder Award for May 2025. Our Community Builder Selection Committee is in the building here, so we get to hear who it's going to be.
The Community Builder Award is a monthly award the city presents to local individuals, businesses, and organizations for their volunteer service, sponsorship, promotion of programs and events, outstanding service in the interest of the city, and for other contributions significant to Rawlins' quality of life. The volunteer committee would like to present the May 2025 Community Builder Award to Stanley Bug.
Welcoming, committed, a good listener, and fair. These are just a few of the words our committee heard when talking to people about Stanley Bug. I know Stan best through his work on the Board of Adjustments, where from the first meeting I attended five years ago, I could tell he ran an effective and competent group through what is really very tedious work, and he still does so to this day. When he was nominated, his praise shared about his great work for the city's community development department, and that quickly demonstrated to the committee that he is worthy of this award. To prepare for this evening, our community members got to know him better. His enthusiasm about our city and community really shone through their conversations. Since making Rawlins his home in 1979, he's involved himself in numerous clubs and boards in the community and around the county. In addition to his leadership on the Board of Adjustments, he has also served on the Lions Club, Boys and Girls Club, and more. Everyone that we spoke to about Stan had nothing but kind words and respect for him. He strives to see Rawlins grow and become an even better home for all of us, to see Rawlins prosper for the benefit of our people and for our families, and for businesses to come in and make this their home too. His hope for the future of Rawlins is everyone's hope, that Rawlins will grow and become a place people choose and are even more proud to call home, that our businesses and residential spaces are beautiful and welcoming to newcomers. It was clear to see that he cares a lot about what he does and about people. He cares for this community, and we can only hope some of that will rub off on all of us. Please join me in congratulating Mr. Stanley Bug.
Honorable part-time mayor, the Steewes Council, and City Board, everything. I'd like to thank everyone for this award. I was shocked to have received it, and I really appreciate it. It meant a lot to me. I've always said that, there's this famous saying from our presidents, "Ask not what you can do for the people, but what we can do for the city." I, I'm just paraphrasing, but basically, it takes the people of the city to help the city government to make what it is today, and to prosper and get better, and that's my goal, is to help the city get better and grow. And like I said, thank you again for this award. I appreciate it.
Stan wants to donate his $100 to the Boys and Girls Club. Okay, we'll be moving on. We have a series of proclamations to do here, so bear with me as I read through these.
The first one is the City of Rawlins, Wyoming proclamation honoring Rawlins High School and Victory High School graduating classes of 2025. Whereas, the City of Rawlins takes great pride in its tradition of academic excellence and community spirit, and whereas, the Rawlins High School and Victory High School graduating classes of 2025 have successfully completed their high school education, demonstrating dedication, perseverance, and a commitment to learning, and whereas, these graduates have not only excelled in academics, but have also participated in extracurricular activities, athletics, and community service enriching the school and the city of Rawlins. And whereas, the graduating class represents the future of our community, poised to contribute their talents, skills, and leadership in the years to come, now, therefore I, Steve Sanger, Mayor Pro Temp of the City of Rawlins, do hereby proclaim the city's deepest congratulations to the High School, Rawlins High School, and Victory High School graduating class of 2025. We, the citizens of Rawlins, acknowledge your accomplishments and celebrate this momentous occasion in your lives. We are confident that you will continue to achieve great things and make a positive impact on the world. So proclaimed, this sixth day of May 2025. Okay, the next one is the City of Rawlins, Wyoming proclamation honoring, hmm, I'm going to read that one again. This one, okay. Nurses Week proclamation. Whereas, registered nurses in Wyoming constitute our state's largest health care profession, and whereas, the depth and breadth of the registered nursing profession meets the different and emerging health care needs of the Wyoming population in a wide range of settings, and whereas, the Wyoming Nurses Association, as the voice of registered nurses in this, in this state, is working to chart a new course for healthy, a healthy nation that relies on increasing access to primary
I'd like to thank everyone for this award. I was shocked to have received it, and I really appreciate it, it meant a lot to me. I've always said that, there's this famous saying from our presidents, is ask not what you can do for the people, but what we can do for the city. I, I'm just paraphrasing, but basically, it takes the people of the city to help the city government to make what it is today, and to prosper and get better. And that's my goal, is to help the city get better and grow. And like I said, thank you again for this award, I appreciate it.
Stan wants to donate his hundred dollars to the Boys and Girls Club.
Okay, we'll be moving on. We have a series of proclamations to do here, so bear with me as I read through these. The first one is the City of Rollins, Wyoming proclamation honoring Rollins High School and Victory High School graduating classes of 2025. Whereas the City of Rollins takes great pride in its tradition of academic excellence and community spirit, and whereas the Rollins High School and Victory High School graduating classes of 2025 have successfully completed their high school education, demonstrating dedication, perseverance, and a commitment to learning, and whereas these graduates have not only excelled in academics, but have also participated in extracurricular activities, athletics, and community service enriching the school and the city of Rollins. And whereas the graduating class represents the future of our community, poised to contribute their talents, skills, and leadership in the years to come, now therefore I, Steve Sanger, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Rollins, do hereby proclaim the city's deepest congratulations to the high school, Rollins High School and Victory High School graduating class of 2025. We, the citizens of Rollins, acknowledge your accomplishments and celebrate this momentous occasion in your lives. We are confident that you will continue to achieve great things and make a positive impact on the world. So proclaimed this sixth day of May 2025. Okay, the next one is the City of Rollins, Wyoming proclamation honoring, hmm, I'm going to read that one again. This one, okay. Nurses Week proclamation. Whereas registered nurses in Wyoming constitute our state's largest health care profession, and whereas the depth and breadth of the registered nursing profession meets the different and emerging healthcare needs of the Wyoming population in a wide range of settings, and whereas the Wyoming Nurses Association, as the voice of registered nurses in this, in this state, is working to chart a new course for healthy, a healthy nation that relies on increasing access to primary and preventive healthcare, and better utilization of all of our state's registered nursing resources, and whereas professional nursing is an indispensable component of the safety and quality of care of hospitalized and non-hospitalized patients, and whereas the demand for registered nursing services will be greater than ever because of the aging of the Wyoming population, emerging health challenges, the continuing expansion of life-sustaining technologies, and the explosive growth of home healthcare services, and whereas more qualified registered nurses are needed in the future to meet the increasingly complex needs of healthcare consumers in this community, and whereas the cost-effective, safe, and high-quality healthcare services provided by registered nurses will be an increasingly important component of the Wyoming healthcare delivery system in the future, and whereas the Wyoming Nurses Association has declared May 6 through May 12 as Nurses Week with the theme "The Power of Nurses," with an appreciation for nurses' unparalleled impact and their contribution to healthcare, and an open invitation to hashtag #ThankANurse for enriching our lives and the world we live in, therefore be it, let's see, where did it say it twice? Now therefore, I, Steve Sanger, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Rollins, do hereby proclaim May 6 through May 12, 2025 Nurses Week, and be resolved that the residents of Wyoming celebrate registered nurses' accomplishments and efforts to improve our healthcare system and show our appreciation for the state's registered nurses, not just during this week, but at every opportunity throughout the year. I witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the executive seal of the Vice Mayor of the City of Rollins, it's on the bottom of my sheet, to be affixed this day, I'll actually stamp it, day of May 2025. So, thank you. Thank you, thank you. I have used their services, they're great, not just good, great. All right, moving on, that's the same one.
I just wanted to say, I think Mayor Wells is deeply disappointed she didn't get to speak that proclamation, because of her heart for nursing, and really appreciates all nurses.
Thank you. All right, City of Rollins, Wyoming proclamation National Police Week. Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which May 15 falls as National Police Week, and whereas law enforcement officers are the guardians of life and property, defenders of the individual right to be free, warriors in the war against crime, and dedicated to the preservation of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression, and whereas the men and women of the Rollins Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore I, Steve Sanger, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Rollins, call upon all citizens of Rollins and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 11 through May 17, 2025, as National Police Week with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so, have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of Rollins to observe the 15th of May 2025 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. So dated this sixth day of May 2025. Officer Frey?
Thank you, Councilman Sanger and rest of members of the council. We will have our annual police memorial service at the Police Department at 3:00 PM on May 15. If the weather cooperates, we like to have that outside, but a couple of years ago, the wind was so bad that we couldn't even get the flags lowered, they were just extended at full staff at about 30 feet away from the, the flagpole out front. Just one of the things that we always do is recognize our fallen officers from Carbon County and, and take an opportunity to recognize fallen officers from around the country. Last year, 160, 165 officers from various agencies, including municipalities, county agencies, state agencies, and federal agencies were killed in the line of duty, as well as eight police canines that worked for those various agencies. And we'll take the time to honor our fallen officers from around Carbon County, as well as the officers that lost their lives in the line of duty in, in 2024.
Could you repeat the time and the place?
It'll be on the, if the weather cooperates, on the steps of the Police Department at 3:00 PM on May 15. 2:30.
Two.
Oh, thank you. 2:30.
2:30, okay.
As it was whispered in my ear.
You can show up there after October.
After October.
We'll have an open house after the memorial service that usually lasts about 5:00 or 5:30, so everyone is welcome to come, and, and please come meet your local officers and, and help us pay our respects to those who have served and lost their lives. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to our officers, my brother was one, for 26 years. The last one I have is the City of Rollins, Wyoming proclamation's volunteers, volunteers, Rollins Volunteer Week. Whereas volunteers are recognized nationally to focus nation, state, and local attention and vital role of residents serving as volunteers and being an integral part of the fabric of our community, and whereas the City of Rollins and Rollins Downtown Development Authority are blessed with over 500 active volunteers logging thousands of hours every year, and whereas these volunteers dedicate their time to improving our community through beautification, events, coaching youth, serving on boards and commissions, and serving as volunteer firefighters and victims advocates, and whereas the volunteer sector is recognized as the third partner with government and business in building strong communities, and whereas the City of Rollins wishes to recognize these men, women, young adults, and children who have given of their time and talents to our community through our many city departments, and therefore I, Steve Sanger, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Rollins, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18 through May 24 as Rollins Volunteer Week. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the official seal of the City of Rollins, Wyoming, so dated sixth day of May 2025. Ms. Myra.
Honorable counsel, thank you for this proclamation. Many of you know us as the committee who does the Community Builder Award. Along with that, we are blessed with many other jobs, which includes recognizing our volunteers, so we coordinate those thank you notes that you guys always sign for our wonderful boards and commissions, this proclamation among other things. And many people don't know that there's many, many different ways to be involved in the community, it's not just about going to meetings, there's options to be active, you can adopt a street, you can work with the fire department, you can be a coach. So I'd encourage anybody who's interested in learning more about those opportunities to check out our website or give me a call, because the city really does run on volunteers.
Thank you, and thank you all for your service. Okay, we'll be moving on to reports and information.
Old Penn.
Oh, sorry, I just read that and skipped over. So I have a recommendation for the Old Penn Joint Powers Board appointment, Councilman Patterson.
Move to appoint Tyrell Perry to the Old Penn Joint Powers Board for a term ending April 30, 2028.
Second.
I have a first and a second, is there any discussion? Tyrell, are you here? You hiding in the, oh, you were in the corner. Thought you were going to get away with it, didn't you?
Almost. Honorable Mayor Pro Tem, Counsel, thanks for having me here, and I appreciate the opportunity to apply for the board again. I originally stepped in at a vacant position and finished that, well, it was November of '23 till now. And I'm just excited about the opportunity to continue working with the board. I think we have a great board right now, it's a complete board, which is great, you know, it's been difficult in the past, but we have a great team and want to continue being a part of that.
Thank you, thank you for volunteering.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor, is there any discussion? If not, clerk will do open long line voting, oh, there it is.
Long line voting is open. Long line voting is closed, the motion passes with five PAs.
Thank you, moving on to reports and information. The DDA and Hub reports, Pam is out of town, so I'll be doing those. On fabulous Friday and Super Saturday, Friday, May 30, from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM, you'll find these around town. We, and then on Saturday, May 31, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, we'll be doing downtown cleanup. So if you've got some time and you want to come down and help us clean up our parks and our streets and everything, that's what we'll be doing on that day. And I'm going to steal this one right here. And then the other part that I have is summer shenanigans. Three exciting nights starting at 4:00 PM, June 6, that's a night of talent, June 11 is all about kids, and August 1, excuse me, July 11, is all about kids, and August 1 is a blast from the past. In each one of these, like the night of talent, there's musical scavenger hunt in the downtown businesses, community mural projects, open mic at Depot Park, that should be interesting. A concert starting at 7:00 PM, also at Depot Park, and then food probably from all of our different vendors downtown, and our food trucks. And on the 11th, we have kidpreneurs, baby entrepreneurs, in downtown businesses, cornhole and volleyball tournaments, dance performances, sunset splash in a movie in Depot Park, starting at 9:00 PM. And again, there's probably food trucks, plus our locals that are in the downtown area. And then August 1, we have historical scavenger hunt in downtown businesses, we have a car show, sheep wagons, I don't know if those two things go together, family art activities, band with a street dance, and again, food, and I'm going to assume that's food trucks and downtown businesses. So those are two great events to come down and see over the summertime, and the cleanup on Saturday is always fun, there's always a lot of volunteers running around, painting stuff and picking stuff up, so I look forward to seeing you all there, and I see you all, so I expect to see you all there, because I have to go. And we'll be moving on, since I don't have any other reports for that, city manager report and staff reports. Mr. Sarvi.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and honorable counsel. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight, and I want to thank you again for the work session with the budget that we had. A few more dates with the budget that's upcoming, I'm going to have several dates to share with you. The first reading of our budget is scheduled for May 20, which is the next regular scheduled council meeting. We will probably do that as an action item within the meeting. The second reading of the budget will be June 3, that is also a regular council meeting. The third and final reading of the budget will be on Monday, June 9. And that will be a special meeting here in the council chambers beginning at 6:00 PM. The reason that we're going to hold that Monday is that's the week of lamb in Cheyenne, and so we'll take care of that early, and the budgets have to be done by the 15th, so we will do it that night.
Just real quick, it's June 30 and July 9?
June 9. June 3 and June 9.
Oh, 3rd and 9th, I was thinking, I did, we go backward in time, got it.
Okay. We have scheduled our quarterly meeting with the town of Sinclair. We bet we get together and talk water and those things. Our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June 24, and that'll be at 5:00 PM, and it is the city's turn to host that, so we will find a location, probably the depot, is what we're going to try to do, but the location will be forthcoming. This Friday, May 9, will be the recycling center dedication. And that will begin at the recycling center, that'll go from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, and at 5:30 we'll have a ribbon cutting and a small ceremony for the dedication. And as you know, the building will be dedicated to Patrick Martinez, who was the former manager at the landfill, so we will definitely do some reminiscing and different things for Patrick with his family. So that day, the recycle center will be closing at 3:30, and we will start at 4 with the event. Music in the park will be starting up, it's that time of year. The first music in the park will be Thursday, June 19, at Washington Park, so you can start watching for those. The Rollins firefighters will be hosting their annual 5K obstacle race on Saturday, May 17, and that'll be starting at 9:00 AM at Fire Station 2, for everybody that wants to come out and watch the run and support our fire department. As was formerly announced, but say it again, National Police Week is May 11 through May 17. National Peace Officers Memorial Day is Thursday, May 15, with the flag ceremony at 2:30 at the police station, with an open house following inside of the building there. The public is invited to attend. And that is my report for tonight.
Thank you. Moving on, city attorney report.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, honorable counsel. Just a couple of updates, the, excuse me, the city and sheriff's office have finalized an SRO MOU, and I just want to quickly read, the purpose of the MOU is through education and enforcement through cooperative efforts between the Rollins Police Department, Carbon County Sheriff's Office, with the school staff, the students, the parents, the courts, the surrounding neighborhood, and the community social service organizations. The school resource officer program strives to assist Carbon County School District Number One with providing a safer school environment, and strives to hold juveniles responsible for their actions and prevent individual problems from developing into patterns of delinquency which are contrary to the public good. So an SRO MOU has been approved, it was previously approved by city council, the last one, on July 16, 2019, and at that time, it was between the City of Rollins and School District Number One. Since that time, there have been changes to the SRO program, with SROs at the Carbon County School District Number One schools now being supplied by both the RPD and Carbon County Sheriff's Office. The new MOU has been updated after extensive review, input, and recommendations provided by RPD, the Sheriff's Office, the school district, and all of their respective council. The most notable changes from the prior MOU set forth the communication processes and touchpoints between the RPD and the Sheriff's Office for daily updates, different types of incidents, how handling, and follow-up investigations. The MOU will be signed by Chief Ward and Sheriff Alex Bocken with approvals to form from the respective council and the school district. Any questions about the SRO MOU?
Will we see that MOU?
Absolutely. So it will be provided to council for, essentially to affirm, and it will be signed upon Chief Ward's return to the city, he is off in training, out of town.
Okay.
Another update in regard to franchise agreements for telecommunications providers. So the city has been working with visionary telecommunications, which is a new provider that is seeking to come into Rollins to provide additional internet and telecommunications options to our city. We currently only have a couple of providers, so this is adding We currently only have a couple of providers, so this is adding another provider, another option for our citizens. The city's also working, I'm currently also working with CenturyLink on a new franchise agreement. The last agreement the city had with CenturyLink has been on a holdover status since 2007. So we are essentially entering into a new agreement. So just by way of background, to provide council with what franchises are, they're basically a contract between the city and usually a private utility provider who needs use of the city's public right-of-ways to deliver their services. The public streets and roads crisscrossing our cities and towns are the backbone of our transportation needs, but they're also the corridors for these other utilities that are vital to our citizens. Cities, counties, Department of Transportation, they often enter into franchise agreements with private agencies granting them use for the public right-of-ways. And the use of the right-of-ways with these franchise agreements, it provides clarification and instructions for digging in the right-of-ways, for the insurance indemnification, sets forth the length of a franchise and other types of issues that come up, including payments, tax arrangements, and things like that. So franchise agreements are a vital part of the working of our city. Does anybody have any questions about those forthcoming?
So are you also working on pricing? Has that gone? I mean, if it's been since 2007.
Yes, actually, so.
Are you getting paid more?
Well, the franchise agreements, telecommunications franchise agreements, by statute, both federal and state statute, all players have to be on an even playing field. So you can't have one that gets a better deal than the others or less requirements. So they are all going to be on the same playing field. Currently, the basis for the franchise agreements is an agreement that the city currently has with Fat Beam Communications. And that sets forth a 5% franchise fee. And so that is the basis for Visionary and for CenturyLink. There's another communications provider who is also looking to come in. They are, the name of that organization is All West Communications. They are out of Utah. They currently have operations in the western part of the state and are seeking to expand.
It's 5% of the project? Or 5% of their income coming in?
Of their revenues for certain services. So even though the, excuse me, currently, the statutes, the Wyoming statutes and some of the federal regulations, we can't charge franchise fees on revenues for internet services. So it's only on communications. So when, for example, we reviewed the budget earlier, and you can see with those franchise fees, they're vastly different from, say, the gas to the telecommunications, and there's different limitations in each of the different types of franchises. So, well, it would be nice to charge a lot more. Unfortunately, we don't have that option. Final update, nuisance ordinance changes. We have a work session scheduled, I believe, the 20th? For the 20th, to cover the changes for the nuisance ordinances that were made following the final touch base meeting with operation stakeholders. And we will present those to council for a work session and then schedule a follow-up for third reading or determine whether we need to start fresh again.
May 20th. Okay. Anything else, Russ?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Super. We'll be moving on to city council updates, if you've got anything.
I do for my constituents. We need to look at hiring an HVAC employee to reduce outsourcing HVAC expenses, which I don't know if the city's looking at that at all, but that was a concern. The cemetery, would the water sprinkler system need to be replaced? A question, is it water well-fed or pumped in?
It's pumped in.
It's pumped in.
It's pumped in.
It's grabbed before the tank.
Yes, it is city-fed water.
Okay.
From treatment plant. There is a well out there, but they pulled the well many, many years ago. From old reports that we have, the water was not a good quality water, a lot of minerals in it, and could not produce the amount of water to water the whole cemetery.
Okay. The corrals need to have speed bumps? There's concerns that someone can be ran over by fast-moving vehicles. It's an understanding from this person that the city controls the streets, and the people either rent or they purchase the corral space, but the streets are owned by the city. And this person that came to me said that they would like to have speed bumps or something that would make vehicles slow down. I guess she was getting into her vehicle, and a truck came by real quick, and she barely got out of the way. And so she was asking if there could be speed bumps put in into the roads, or at least at some intersections there.
So from what I am aware of is the Glen addition is its own entity. We maintain some of the roadways as we have water infrastructure in there, so we kind of maintain that as a courtesy to the residents down there, but we do not have any call on any of the roads. That's why we do not have street signs down there, stop signs, any of that aspect. So we can't really go in and put something in there like that.
Sure, sure.
If that was the case, then we would introduce everything the city is into that area, as far as all ordinances and everything else. And in the past, when we've talked about that, they absolutely would like the city to stay away from that and just take care of, help take care of the roadways.
The street sweepers, they've been doing a great job throughout Rollins. Thank you.
Don't they have an organization down there to, a group down there that they meet and discuss stuff down there? That would more or less be up to them to bring to the people of the corrals down there to determine what they need to do and want to do.
Oh, maybe like a commission or something?
Yes, from what I'm aware of, there was a group down there that was looking into stuff. The city is working on a new water infrastructure system down there to build in the future, and that board was going to look into some maybe agricultural grants to help the city with it, as we do not have funds for construction, but we do have a design at this point. So moving forward with some kind of a grant, an agricultural grant, would make sense. And that board was talking about looking into some of that stuff.
Getting back to the street sweepers, the sidewalks still need to be looked at. We're sweeping the sidewalks. Somebody brought up, so coming into Rollins, you know, there's a lot of dirt everywhere from the, from the snow. You know, they throw the, for the ice, to maintain the ice or to get rid of the ice. Could they, could somehow, could we use jail employees or prisoners to help clean that up?
You know, I'm not sure about that. I don't know what kind of crews that have been done in the past. I know we have specific equipment, but Parks and Rec is part of doing that work, and they have equipment, but they are very short-staffed right now.
Sure.
I have spoke with their superintendent, and he is going to work with me and the streets crew here very shortly to try to get those sidewalks cleaned up. He knows that it needs to be done, but he's been very busy with VFW fields and a couple other projects. But I actually spoke with him the day he came to me and asked what our schedule was like to start working on beautifying the entrances of the city, so.
I appreciate it. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, council as a whole, make sure you ask for the floor before you top up. Okay? Make sure you tell me that you're going to be speaking before you actually go, so you don't talk over each other. Because you're not supposed to have a conversation directly with him.
Okay. I'll have the conversation with you and then you with Russ.
You just go, and then I'll go, and then you talk.
Oh, okay. All right. I thought I did. I apologize.
No, you did that, and then he jumped in, and then you went back. So we just got to make sure that when you have the floor, you have the floor, and tell, you release the floor to him, and that it just keeps it clean.
Sure.
Councilman Lumen.
The Planning and Zoning Commission is meeting Tuesday, May 13th, at 5:30 here at the chambers. So if anybody's interested in that, just to let everybody know. All I have.
Anything? Russ, anything else? Okay. All right. Moving on, we have no unfinished business. We'll be moving down to, if I can get this to move, new business. I need the approval for the minutes of April 7th, 2025, special city council meeting. Councilman Lumen.
Move to approve the April 7th, 2025, special city council meeting minutes as presented.
Secretary.
I have a first and a second. Do we have any discussion?
No, you weren't there at that meeting, just so you know.
Right. I have that on a list of things. Okay, so there's no discussion. Clerk will open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed. Motion passes with five yeas.
Okay, moving on. I need an approval for the minutes of April 10th, 2025. Councilman Patterson?
Move to approve the April 10th, 2025, special city council meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Do we have any discussion? No discussion. Clerk will open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed. Motion passes with five yeas.
Okay, moving on. Approval of a donation from Marathon Oil Corporation in the amount of $8,500 for the purchase of a new electronic scoreboard to be located on the southeast field of the VFW baseball fields. I need a motion. Councilman Lumen.
Move to accept the donation from Marathon Oil Corporation in the amount of $8,500, $500 to purchase a new electronic scoreboard for the southeast field at the VFW fields.
Secretary.
I have a first and a second. This is a motion to accept a donation from Marathon Oil Corporation in the amount of $8,500. Is there any discussion?
I may wasn't able to be here.
Yeah? Hold on. Councilman Elliott.
Thanks, sir. Is this different than the scoreboard that was discussed a few months ago, maybe in January? Where there was a scoreboard for another baseball field or for the same baseball field?
So in 2022, Lynn, keep me on track here. In 2022, we bought a baseball, a scoreboard for this set of field that we're talking about now. It has not been installed yet. In 2023, or is it '23 and '24?
No, it just came from Wyoming Community Gas. I just wanted you to state that.
Right. So that one came from Wyoming Community Gas?
The donor, yes.
Okay.
The council approved that in 2022, and the funds were received in '23.
Okay. And then in '24, '23? In '23, we got, was that one a grant from HF?
No.
Or was that one from?
That was from Wyoming Community Gas again, and that one actually went to the Sports Complex, which is across the road from the rec field. There's some fields there. And that's where that money went for the Wyoming Community Gas.
And that went on that same southwest, it's not the same field, but it's on their southwest field as well. So now they're split. One is at the VF, and one is over there.
And the Sports Complex.
This one is for the second, or that they want to put at the VFW fields. If you're driving down Daly Street, it's kind of set up. There's a field facing you. There's a field on the north, one on the east, and one on the west. The one on the south is the one that Wyoming Community Gas, they've already funded that one. We just have to get it put up onto the stand we have, and then install another one on the north field, directly across from that. That's what this one is.
Okay.
Councilman Patterson?
Is this cost going to cover the amount of installation and putting the wiring to it, the 8,500?
Mayor Protem, Councilman Patterson, yes. The estimated cost of this is going to be between $5,000 and $6,000. So this will also help a little bit with either the wiring or we are looking at solar options to power it. It will help with that. So yes, it will cover the cost.
All right. Any other discussion? If not, clerk would you open online voting?
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed. Motion passes with five yeas.
Okay, moving on. Resolution approving and accepting the Level 3 construction funding from Wyoming Water Development Commission, known as WWDC, to the City of Rollins, Wyoming, for the water service delivery system. I need a motion. Councilman Patterson?
Move to approve the resolution accepting the Level 3 construction funding from Wyoming Water Development Commission, WWDC, for the City of Rollins, Wyoming, for the water services delivery system. Secretary.
I have a first and a second. Is there any discussion? I have a question. This is a matching fund for us? Is this one a matching, Russ?
Yes. So a little bit of history on this. Last fall, we went before the Wyoming Water Development Commission in Casper, and we asked for this grant, which the committee approved at the time. And then we had to wait for the legislature this last year in Cheyenne for them to give the final approval. And once we received that, now we're coming back for the final acceptance from council. The grant is about $2.9 million, and it needs to be matched. We will match that 50%. So we are looking at the matching sources now that we have accepted this. We will either approach the drinking water fund through the SLIP Board or USDA funding for this. We could always look into cash reserves, but it'll be probably one of those two that we'll look for.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion? If not, clerk, would you open online voting, please?
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed. Motion passes with five yeas.
All right, moving on. Ordinance approve first reading and waive the reading of the ordinance amending Rollins Municipal Code Section 10.15.070, failure to maintain liability coverage. Need a motion? Councilman Lumen?
I move to approve the first reading and waive the reading of the ordinance amending Rollins Municipal Code Section 10.15.070, failure to maintain liability coverage.
Secretary.
I have a first and a second. Attorney, Ms. Panina?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Senator, Honorable Counsel. Liability insurance is required under Wyoming statute to ensure that drivers can cover the cost of injuries or property damage that they may cause in a crash. Liability coverage provides financial compensation for victims without requiring them to pursue legal action against an uninsured individual. The requirement has been declared to be an important public safety policy from the Wyoming Legislature. And it also reduces the burden on courts and public assistance programs, encouraging responsible driving, and it helps maintain public safety on the roadways. Section 10.15.070 of the Rollins Municipal Ordinance governs the requirement for motor liability coverage within our city limits. The ordinance has existed since at least 1985 and is intended to generally mimic the state statute. We don't have to completely strictly adhere. We can make our own requirements a little, well, the choice of words are, it doesn't have to be exactly like the statute. It can be stricter, but it cannot be less. It's less strict. The state statute is set forth at Title 31, Chapter 4, Section 103. The ordinance in our municipal, in our city was last updated on May 2nd, 2023, through Ordinance 5, 2023, in an attempt to comply with the statutory changes that were. that were last updated by the state legislature in 2017. Unfortunately, the current ordinance, in its attempt to streamline, overlooked a couple of pieces of the state statute. So although the current ordinance penalizes owners of motor vehicles operating without liability coverage, it failed to include enforcement mechanisms for non-owner drivers. So that means if your kid is driving your car without insurance, there's not an enforcement mechanism. So the proposed amendment is brought forth pursuant to the gaps in the current ordinance as identified by our PD officers, the municipal judge, and myself to close this gap in the loophole for non-owner drivers operating without the required liability coverage.
So I'm trying, I'm trying to understand, the state changed their, they've made it a certain way, and if we mimic exactly what we do, what they do, then they're going to have all the coverages, the, whatever they call them, where you, you carry your own money?
Right, self-insured.
Self-insured money. They, have they, have they clarified their point on all of those things, and we, we did not? Or we didn't tie our, our ordinance to their state statute?
So there's a couple of ways that we can do it. We can adopt a lot of our motor vehicle ordinances to just say, we adopt, we hereby adopt all, you know, certain, the, you know, Title 31 of section, whatever, of the Wyoming statutes. However, not all of those are truly applicable. And there are also other situations within our own municipality that we might choose to have other types of ordinances. And so in this particular statute, it's been a standalone sta, I'm sorry, ordinance in the city since at least 1985. And it is kind of, it is pretty much complied with the state statutes. When there was the change in 2017, they divided it out into a few different sections, and-
Next, they being the state?
Yes, thank you. The state divided it out into a few different sections, and in updating the municipal ordinance to comply with the state statutory, there was a, just an inadvertent oversight in regard to non-owner drivers. Because the state statute, it has the exact same as Section A and B, and they essentially kind of mimic each other, but it just fills the gap. And so that's what the proposed ordinance change is doing, is filling that gap. And in my attachments here, there's the red line modifications, the current, and the state statute to demonstrate exactly what those changes are.
Does the state currently have a non-owner?
Yes.
Responsibility?
Yes.
So if we just mimic the state, then we've covered the non-owner?
Pretty much what we're, what we're doing here.
But we're writing a thing for our own ordinance, and just, instead of just saying we're mimicking exactly what the state has? What are we, what are we not doing, or what do we have that is special that we wouldn't just mimic?
Rather than, so while we could certainly just say that, I could modify this to just say the, the city hereby adopts the, you know, you must have liability coverage, but the state statute goes into a lot more detail. So it's rather than changing all of our, our traffic ordinances to comply with the, with the corresponding state statute, this is just a one-off.
Councilman Lumen.
So I'm going to have to help my feeble mind here. If I have a vehicle, and it's insured, I have it insured. And like you said, you have your kid drive it. Or wouldn't he be insured in my vehicle?
If he's permissive, I mean, the presumption is there, but-
Because when the police ask for insurance, it's insurance on the vehicle, not for the person.
Actually, that's, it's, it's, right, drivers, so if you actually look at your own policy, it's, it's certain insured drivers.
I've never seen my insurance have everybody listed. It's just me and the car.
You have to be name specific on that thing.
Your immediate family at home can drive it. But if you've got a kid that's old enough to have the, it's that, they're not covered. I know, I've seen that happen. There's a bus, but you can ask the police.
So if I drive your friend's car, I got to carry my car insurance? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, your insurance covers it.
Oh, that's crazy.
Okay, yeah, it just would seem to me that it would be simpler to just mimic what, because a highway patrolman can stop a vehicle on a road in Rawlins, Wyoming. But he's not bound by Rawlins's ordinance. He's bound by state law. So it would seem to me it would make much more sense for us to just follow what the state law says, so that it doesn't matter if the sheriff stops you here, our own PD stops you here, or a highway patrolman stops you here. It shouldn't matter what, when you hand insurance, it should match whatever the state law says that you have to have. Because they're not going to follow, the PD will, but sheriff doesn't have to, and neither does the highway patrol. They don't have to follow our ordinances. They have to follow state law. And so that's, that would be my concern, is, is right there, that we're writing something specific to us, but doesn't apply to all of the agencies traveling on our roads.
If I might ask Lieutenant Price to clarify some of the operational questions, distinguishing municipal enforcement versus county and state.
In our Title 10 and city ordinances, we actually have several ordinances that are unique to the City of Rawlins. So if this change is made, it wouldn't be different than some of those other ordinances that we have. For instance, one of those is the city ordinance for manner of driving. The Wyoming state statute has a careless driving violation and a reckless driving violation. It doesn't have the manner of driving violation. It gives us one step lower to take enforcement action for what's not quite careless driving, but there's bad driving behavior, if that makes sense. There's some language in the careless driving ordinance and in the careless driving statute that specifically outlines those elements, and our manner of driving lets us take enforcement action at a lower level than the careless driving. And so the modification of this ordinance would basically do the same thing for us. It would allow us to take enforcement action when we have somebody that, you know, perhaps I park my vehicle and say, we're not driving this, because it doesn't have insurance, and then someone takes it. There's another issue involved with that, but it gives us another enforcement mechanism on that driver who is driving, and, and puts the responsibility on them to make sure they're operating a vehicle that has the appropriate liability coverage. Whereas the way it is currently, we can only put that onus on the registered owner of the vehicle. And many times, when we're in an enforcement situation, it's difficult for us to determine who the actual owner of the vehicle is. The registration returns that we get through the computer system, it might say Sanger, Steven, and, and then we can't see who the "and" is. Is that your spouse? Is that your child? But we're, you know, I have a couple of vehicles that I own with my children, and so the "and" is my child and not my spouse. And so if this change is made, it allows, it makes it a little bit easier for us to take the appropriate enforcement action when someone is driving without the proper liability coverage, and put that responsibility on the driver. And we operated this way for several years. When this ordinance was changed, it was kind of a surprise to the police department. And it's, we're still going through some adjustments and growing pains with that. And I think the proposal puts us back into a position where it puts that responsibility back on the driver to make sure they're driving a vehicle with proper liability coverage.
So the, if I loan my car to my neighbor, he's clearly not going to be on my liability insurance? He, he wouldn't be, you know, because I did-
May or may not be, depending on, on how your policy is written.
I'm hoping he's not. Walk over and drive my car off, that would be kind of, kind of scary.
But again, it's, you know, it's just depends on how the policies are written and, and what you're paying for with your insurance policy.
Okay.
Some, most policies will cover any driver over a certain age. As we all experienced with teenage drivers, those premiums go up when we have those teenage drivers who are policy, because the insurance companies want to know about them because they're a higher risk.
Right. Okay. Well, I have a first and a second on the floor. Thank you. Is there any more discussion? Good. All right. Clerk will open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed. A motion passes with three yea's. The three yea's was Mayor Protem Sanger, Councilmember Seale, and Councilmember Patterson. The nay was Councilmember Lumen, and the abstain was Councilmember Elliott.
Okay, moving on to the last thing here, is the 2025 City of Rawlins zoning map. Can you come in? Mr. Lou, what do we have here?
I'm the mayor and council. If you look at some of the documents that we did download on the board docs, recently we changed the area on South Side for the BLM Fire Station. It was originally R-75 all the way up to R-Hill. And with the changes for the station to be allowed in a commercial zone, that had to be changed from the R-75 to C-2. To make things more current, ever since I came to City Hall, if you look in some of the offices, we got 18 maps, we got 19 maps. So I thought this would be a good time to change it to our current year, 25. And we've got the PDF file with the A and Associates where we could change if, coming up, if we have a zone change that comes up. And it's granted by planning, zoning, taking the council, and passes council. It's just a matter of making the call, gets changed, and we're done. So we're not going to have to wait. I think the last one we had was 19, five years ago, six years ago, for the last map. I personally think these maps should be updated at least every two years, just to keep up with some of the changes that we have in our, our community.
So the last one we have is 19, and this is the current one, 25, and you, you just want to make sure that this is the one we're using for everything?
Right. This is the one that I'll bring back. This is just discussion. If there's any concerns with this, then I will bring it back at the next council meeting and start going through the process of getting this adopted as our, our zoning map.
So when you come back to, to adopt this, can you show us, I mean, there's a lot of things on this map. Can you show us where the changes, where we would be looking to go, okay, that's been changed, that's been changed? I know you, you have one, it's R.75. It's down by the Maverick. And there's, there's stuff on that property that is not a house. It's not. So you're, you're referring to that kind of stuff where you're going to change that zoning to make it match what's in that area right there? Because it's C-2 right next to it.
Yes, and, and that's going to be one of the changes coming up. Back in 21, it went through planning and zoning. But when planning and zoning, there was a conflict with the person that lived next to that area.
Okay.
So he excluded himself, so there wasn't enough for a vote. So that's why that always stayed, the R-75. I want to change that to C-2, to make that more uniform with that C-2 area by Maverick.
Okay. So yeah, if we could see, if you could just, you know, mark them, these, these areas that went through and identified as needing to be updated to be current in the 2025 map, that would be outstanding.
Okay.
Councilman Elliott.
Is there a way to get this map more clear with, I mean, even if it's not on a PDF or on paper, but where you can zoom into it to see the streets?
Well, the, the bigger the map, the more it's going to take for space. This one here that I have on this poster board, that's what's going to be going to the departments. And that's what we use in our office. Okay.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Council, Councilman Lumen.
So you talked about, we're going to discuss this about accepting this as a 2025. Is there going to be then a process, like you said, that we're yearly, you're going to update it?
Whenever we have, Councilwoman Lumen, whenever we have a, a zone change that goes to planning and zoning, then I feel that it should be updated at that time. So we may wait, because I think since I've been in the planning and zoning board of adjustments, I think we've only had a couple zone changes. So what I want to do with staff is go through this map and see, because the last thing we want to do is get into a lot of spot zoning. And if we can do changes with different areas to where we can accommodate, so like in the R-75, the big yellow on, on the screen there, if we were to zone part of that as a C-2, I think that would be stopped at planning and zoning due to the fact that we're spot zoning. So we'd have all R-75, and in the middle, we'd have a 200 by 200 spot that was C-2. That's what we try to deter from. So our map's going to be uniform throughout. And, and like I said, we'll have staff go through this as well, and, and see if there's other changes. Back in 21, when they did the 10-zone changes, that's what they did. They went through and the different areas of town, looked at the map. And at that point, they decided, yes, we can, we can move this to a residential multifamily planning and zoning again, and then bring it to council. So everything stays uniform, and we follow the channels properly.
The new process would be that as those changes are made, then we update the map, not wait?
Not wait five or six years. Correct.
That's what I wanted to know. Thanks.
Okay. To answer your question, if you go to the county's website, and go to the assessor's office, and click on the GIS map, it'll bring up a little thing that's about this big, and it looks like Rawlins. But if you keep spreading the screen open, you can go look at any part of town by just moving that screen around, and see streets and go, oh, so they're talking about it starts here and it ends right here. You'd be able to see exactly by street name and everything.
Will it show on there the zoning?
No, it doesn't. But it does tell you where the streets are, and then you can look at this map and go, okay, that's right here.
Okay.
So you can go there to look up, and then, you know, if you need to know a value of a house next to you, then you can look that up too.
Yeah.
So, because it's going to be-
Know who owns all of them and who lives there.
Yeah, you can see all of that. But I use it all the time to try to figure out when somebody says there's a problem right here, I don't know what "right here" means, so I'll go look.
Right.
And find that, and then go, oh, that's what you're referring to, is right there. And then I can drive over, because now I know where I'm going, and take a look at it.
All right. Thank you.
And if, on a side note on that, if you look on the city's website on the planning and zoning, you can also bring up that map, and it'll have the zoning specified on that section.
Okay.
That's, that'd be a great thing. So, okay, thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
All right. Do we have anything else that we need to discuss here today? If not, we will adjourn this meeting at 8:43. Next meeting is May 20th, uh, May 20, 25. Okay. Thank you. For all of you that came, thank you as well.